Thank you Chair Pachakoff, President Cavalluna and the entire board. I send you really greetings on behalf of the Henry Ford College Foundation Board where Abe Mofka is our chair. We have some exciting news to share with you and I'm going to ask in a few moments, Dr. Chapman to join me. One of the goals, as you know, for the Henry Ford College Foundation Board, for over thirty years, we've had a very positive relationship with the college. And our goal, the board's goal, is to help raise private resources, to help move the agenda of the college and on behalf of our students. I'm convinced that out of all of the institutions that I've been at, this foundation board is by far one of the best boards that I have ever worked with. They are very committed to the work of the college, they're very committed to private philanthropy, very committed to really moving this institution along. About three years ago, the foundation board, in conversation with the board of trustees, made a decision that we were going to look at other ways to be able to move the agenda of the college forward. For many years, and it's, the foundation has done a great job, has been mostly focusing on scholarships, and that's been great. But over the years, we really felt like in order to really move the needle for this college, we had to emulate our university brethren, for lack of a better word, in moving beyond just raising money for scholarships, but looking at finding other private philanthropy and other resources through foundations to support initiatives that will continue to benefit the college. So the foundation board made a significant investment in a campaign focusing on academic success, student success, and workforce development. The amazing thing is, is that when you take two dreamers, and you have two dreamers who have dreams, great things happen. I had a vision, I had a dream, in working with the foundation board, of being able to really move the needle in terms of trying to locate private philanthropy, specifically a private foundation, that would really help us reach our goal. Dr. Chapman and I started talking, and she had a dream of creating an early college trade school program. And it's amazing, when you take two people who have a dream, something great happens. And I'm here to tell you that something great has really happened for this college. In our work with the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation, over the past year and a half, Dr. Chapman, myself, Andrew Whitman, and even President Cavalluna, we have been working, developing a very positive relationship, sharing Dr. Chapman's dream of the early college program, sharing my dream of the Henry Ford College Foundation and the work that we do. And what we found is that not only does Henry Ford College have a great reputation, but they found merit in the credibility of our foundation, myself, my board, they found merit in the credibility of Dr. Chapman, and they found merit in the credibility of our current president. And because of that, in July of this year, they've, I got permission, I had to get permission first, I can publicly say that they have invested $2.1 million as a gift of investment to Henry Ford College Foundation to start an early college trade school program. It is by far the largest private, private gift from a foundation that this college has ever received in its history. So I wanted to make that public announcement to you, that the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation found merit and credibility in who we are, that they have invested $2.1 million in us and what we're doing. So hopefully that deserves a round of applause. I don't know if there's any specific questions for me in terms of philanthropy, but this, Dr. Chapman is really the person of the hour, and she can answer any questions about the trade school program. But any questions for me in terms of the philanthropy aspect, I'm more than willing to answer that for you. Okay? Dr. Chapman?
I just real quickly want to thank both you and President Cavalluna for your vision of going out there, and I've seen the work that you've done in that regards, and I just have to commend you for having that vision and really bringing it home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I will say that as soon as I saw the dollar figure, I went and looked up the fund, where it came from, because I was unfamiliar with the name, didn't quite ring a bell with me. So I'm so happy to see that we're branching out, so to speak, in our outreach to those types of opportunities. I do have one question, how quickly can we ask for more?
Well, we are working-
Every year?
We are working, let me put it to you this way, we are working on continuing to strengthen that relationship. It's like a good marriage, how about that?
All right, well you keep them happy.
Absolutely.
Trustee Lane?
I don't want to diminish Ralph C. Wilson, but I believe there's an error here, because I think Eugene Forfa's gift to the college was larger.
Correct, but what I, maybe I didn't say it clearly, from a private foundation, this is the largest, yes, Mr. Forfa, who I'm familiar with, was an estate gift, but this is the largest gift from a private foundation that has been given to us. You are correct.
And thank you for that clarification, Trustee Lane. Are there any other questions?
Thank you, Dr. Best.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, if you just want to give us an update with your vision.
Yeah, I know that Vice President Best asked me to kind of talk about, you know, where the vision for this came from, and it really came from a conversation that he was having with each of us. At that time, I was a Director of Workforce and Professional Development before the position as Dean, and he told me to dream big, and so, when somebody kind of gives you a blank check to dream big, you do just that. And so, one of the things that has always been really important to me, really important to my team, is that we are consistently living the legacy of Henry Ford, and that was born from trade, from trade and apprentice education. So we wanted to honor our tradition, but we also wanted to bring forth some emergent occupations that we know that's going to come as a result of Industry 4.0, because we are in an age of digitization. So we kind of wanted to blend all of those worlds and bring them into one place. We also wanted to have some of our industry partners take ownership for the education and skilling up a future workforce, and we believe that the trade school is going to give them an opportunity to do that. We also wanted our trade associations, our labor associations, to take ownership of the trade school as well, and really support our youth. And we felt that we have already built a strong foundation in our advanced manufacturing early middle college, our collegiate academy, it's the strength of those two efforts that we are drawing from, and we're using that as a basis and a foundation for us to move forward and spread it to other districts. So it was really that, me having an opportunity to kind of sit down and think about if I could really dream big, what would a trade school look like? And so that is what we kind of poured into this early middle college trade school. It's not an early middle college high school, it's a program, so it won't be physically housed here on our campus as our advanced manufacturing early middle college, students will migrate here for their career and technical education program. So we have our traditional programs, and then we're looking at some new programming that we're going to introduce. Faculty is very involved and very excited about this opportunity, and next week, we're going to have our first meeting to begin to launch the program.
Are there any questions, Trustee Moses?
Well, thank you. This has been great. I know the governor has been advocate of trade schools, and this is something that we are going to have a great time since we are taking on this opportunity, that is Dean. So my question is, when do we start?
Well, you know, we wish we could have started a long time ago.
No problem.
But we're actually having our first implementation meeting next week.
Okay.
Yep.
So students can register for these kind of programs?
Fall 2020 is when we're launching the school, so we've got a lot of work to do in a relatively short period of time. But I kind of gave Shannon a little bit of an inside track that we are going to be doing this. So she was like, why didn't we do this for the Marshall Plan for Talent? But we really couldn't do it because it was too early. We were too early in the stages of conversations with Ralph Wilson, so that's the reason we had to wait a little bit.
Right. Trustee Thorpe?
While it seems like a large donation that we were given, how long do you think this will last with the new program, and what is the idea once the funds run out?
So, of course, with any of our early middle colleges, we will be charging tuition, you know, for our dual enrolled students. We, our big budget, because he told me to dream big, my big was not 2.1, my big was 5.5. So we are still engaging other foundations, and Reginald Best can talk a little bit about that. So we're continuing on to try to raise funds, but we do anticipate our relationships with the other districts for revenue to start flowing into the early middle college through dual enrollment tuition.
So then, can I assume that, since you're saying the fall of 2020, that we will be alerting all of our high school counselors to start having this conversation with the students come spring?
Come spring, yeah.
Okay, and you'll have something for them to share?
It's an aggressive plan, it was.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much.
Very welcome.
Next item, please.
Discussion items. HFC Board of Trustees Scholarship Report, forty-five, twenty-five, Vice President Best.
That's why we're sitting in the front row.
Again, when I talk about the great work that our foundation continues to do, I'm always very, very proud of what we do in terms of scholarships, even though we're moving in other areas in terms of trying to raise resources. I do want you to know that we have not lost our focus on awarding scholarships to students. Stacy Bosman is our scholarship coordinator and has done, over the years, a wonderful job of really streamlining and creating a program in terms of efficiency that will be beneficial to all students. And I wanted to give her an opportunity to share with you the scholarship overview and answer any questions that you may have regarding that. So I'm going to ask Ms. Bosman if she would come up.
I'm being on this side, I'm so nervous.
We don't bite.
So each year, we do a scholarship overview, and so this is the 2019-20 scholarship overview. Oh, okay.
I was going to say, stop getting nervous.
Here's our scholarship application process and timeline. We had a CPI team a few years ago, and we met to come up with some ways to keep things so that they'd be familiar with students. So we established some hard dates. So every January 1st to March 31st is our application period, and that runs the same every year. And then in April, the scholarship committee meets and reviews the scholarships and selects the recipients, and students are notified of their awards in early May via hock mail. And then a thank you letter is provided to the donor prior to the students receiving their awards. Once they've submitted the thank you letter, then financial aid will get the email that it's okay to release their award to them, and those thank you letters are shared with the donors in the fall with their stewardship reports. So this year, we had our scholarship celebration at Beblows on August 13th, and we had, it was our biggest event of the year. We had approximately 350 scholarship recipients, donors, dignitaries, foundation board members, board of trustees and cabinet members. So thank you to those that could come. Tyrone Carter, who is our sixth district state representative, was our keynote speaker, and he did a great job. He did a message, "Earn, Learn, and Return," which I thought was really-
That's amazing.
-spot on for the event. And then, this is a four-year overview of our scholarships. I did put an asterisk next to 2019 and 20, because we do do some awards in the winter as well. Some of, like the board of trustees will be awarded again in the winter, hospitality, some things like that. So that number will be growing. The dollar amount is comparable to last year. The number of awards has gone down some, but we have had some transitions with not doing the Edray Golf Scholarship, which used to be 100, $1,000 scholarships per year. So to kind of recapture that, we've met with donors and reworked some of their memorandums of understanding to have them increase their awards or offer more awards if they had it in their endowment to do. And the board of trustees scholarship, I thought it might be meaningful to talk a little bit about that process. So annually, the three high schools, Dearborn, Etzel Ford, and Fortson, the counselors will each pick two recipients, and those recipients are selected off of academics and merit, and they get a full tuition scholarship, or sixty, sixty credits or four semesters, whichever comes first. And this is this year's board of trustees recipients. We do have Etzel Ford selected twin sisters to be the recipients this year, which was kind of neat, so that's what we have for this year. And then here, I also included in your packet just a couple of the thank you letters that we received from the scholarship recipients. This is Brendan Patrick's thank you letter, he was a recipient of the Veterans SSA Scholarship, so that is in your packet for you to read at your leisure. And then we had the Dearborn AAUW Scholarship recipient, Jennifer Dillman. For next year's luncheon, we are tentatively looking to schedule it on Thursday, August 6, 2020, and the Ford Community and Performing Arts Center is available, so we're hoping to lock that in. We were also taught, I met with, not trustee, chairman, vice chairman McDonald, Denise McDonald, who's our scholarship chair, and we talked about possibly having it the same time every year as well for the luncheon, because when we do it before school starts, it definitely helps with students not worrying about missing classes, or some of our instructors are donors, so everybody can kind of plan it, have it on their calendar, and know that it happens at the first Thursday of the month, so that's something that we're working towards. And we would like to continue to expand the event by including more legislators from Dearborn, Detroit, and neighboring communities. And we have started vetting our keynote and student speakers for next year as well. So that was just talking about our meeting we had on September 5th. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Trustee Moses?
I just wanted to say I was overjoyed at the event. It was very well put together. The representative, he was amazing in his speech, and so was President Cavalluna, so great job. I mean, scholarships offer a lot of students the opportunity to further their education and to stay in college, and it has helped me. So I, we truly appreciate all of the donors, and we hope that we can get some more. So I throw that back to Dr. Best and to all of us to look for graduates of Henry Ford and to see if they can give back to the college. So thank you once again.
Thank you.
Trustee Thorpe?
When I look at the number of awards and exclude things like the board of trustees scholarship, I'm wondering how many of these scholarships are going to students in their first year versus their second year? Because this timeline, would even incoming new students be able to apply? I mean, when are they usually making their decision? Do they have hock mail by May, if they have a graduate high school sign?
So surprisingly, the number is almost half of first year applicants and second year applicants that receive scholarships. We've done a really good job with the recruiters to let the students know what the dates are, and once they start filling out their college apps and things like that, they do get more and more familiar with how early they have to start the process. A lot of seniors, starting in September, you know, doing the college apps and things like that, so.
Can we then assume that the school counselors are helping them look for those opportunities of scholarship applications at any of the schools they're potentially going to attend?
Yes, it seems to be pretty standard that they are turning them towards that. And we do have situations sometimes where students can't utilize the scholarship if they have tip or something like that, they're not eligible for a tuition scholarship, so we're able to re-award those for the winter. And last year, we actually opened up a scholarship to try to target some students who had filled out the application but then didn't come to Henry Ford, and so we brought in some, a few students that way as well for the winter of last year's semester.
Yes, Trustee Barry?
You've done some good work on this side of the podium, I know that, you didn't do too bad tonight either.
I have four meetings left on that one.
Thank you for your service. My question is, at the high school level, are we familiar with the process, or they do their own? What I'm trying to get to is, do we know how many students apply for these scholarships?
We have had almost 2,000 applicants this year.
You're talking about just for the high schools?
Oh, the high school? I could certainly-
Board of trustees scholarships.
Oh, the board of trustees, they don't apply. The counselors select them.
Recommend, recommend.
Yes.
Do we have any idea, like, they just recommend, or is there a process?
They just recommend, that's-
They just recommend.
Yes, that's the process right now.
I'd like to get to, if there's a larger need there, maybe we can do something about it.
It was-
We can talk about that later.
Yeah, it was a really big hit to them with the Edray Scholarship going away, because that was for Dearborn students. So going from 100 and kind of transitioning them into a few other scholarships, but it was substantially less amount of scholarship, so.
Okay, thank you.
But we worked pretty well together to find different things.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right then, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Trustee Barry, you asked a great question, and what I'll do is, I will talk with Dearborn schools to find out their process and bring that information to you, because we're not aware of exactly how they go about the process.
Of how they bet, yeah.
Yeah, so I'll find out and communicate that information back to you.
Appreciate that, thank you.
All right, next item, please.
Local strategic value resolution, board report forty-five, twenty-six, Vice Presidents Nealon and Zagalski.
Good evening, board trustees. This is an annual situation that we do every year based upon the state appropriations, which of course haven't been finalized yet because we do not have a budget for this coming year, but we have to do this, do this anyway. What we need to do is come through and define our local strategic values within the community, how we do our partnerships, who we partner with, who we have agreements with, et cetera, et cetera. That's done by the academic side of the House, of Dr. Nealon's folks. That's updated usually every other year, and what it does is it equates to a portion of our state appropriations. And if we don't do this, we lose potentially 5% of our formula. Now, the formula allocates 50% of it proportionally to the college based upon a number of different factors. I won't get into that detail, it's very intricate for a small amount of funds, is what it basically is. But we still will take anything we can get from the state of Michigan, as you know. So that's been updated this year. We're asking for it to be renewed and passed by you, so that we can then provide the state of Michigan with a resolution that shows we've done our part on this for the funding of this. And Dr. Nealon, this is one of the years in which a number of the items were updated, so I'll turn that over to you for a few minutes.
Yeah, not much there. It's a complex template, and we feel very confident that we were able to address how the college not only meets, but in many cases surpasses the expectations that would be necessary for us to be in the running for this kind of funding. So it was our pleasure to update that this year.
Yes, Dr. Nealon.
They've required five, and you submitted six?
I think so.
Yeah, so they said that you couldn't get the funding unless you had at least five different kinds of programs, but you submitted six.
We're overachievers.
Yes, we are.
Trying to set a mark for our students.
Good for you.
We asked, is there extra credit?
How about a few extra bucks?
Well, quite frankly, I was very impressed with what I read in the report, and I think I would love to have that just published publicly in a manner that would toot our horn, so to speak, because I think it really-
It's a celebration.
I think it really highlighted a lot of things that people are totally unaware of is happening here at the college.
Maybe a newspaper reporter would be interested.
So, yeah, it would be wonderful if we could have those highlights somehow publicized, because quite frankly, I know when I deal with the organizations I deal with, they don't have any idea what's happening here.
Yeah.
They really don't, and we need to continue to demonstrate that we are delivering quality products.
I'd be happy to share that with Ron.
Yes, please.
And is there anybody else who has any questions? Well, look at you, you're getting way easy. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thanks.
Next item, please.
Board of Trustees Policy Updates, Trustee McDonald.
Okay, we, we had, I'm just, this was the stuff that we, this was the items that we discussed during today's meeting. No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm a little off. Okay, we discussed record management and retention, and that was, let's see, this is throwing me off being here, because we usually discuss it at the end, sorry about that. We discussed the addition of record management and retention policy, and that was patterned after the state of Michigan's policy for school boards. We also discussed the residency requirements, tuition and fees, and refunds as they pertain to the temporary protected status classification, students classified as such by the Homeland Security, or, I'm sorry, Homeland Secretary Department. Let's see, I'm trying to read my notes, I'm-
Trustee McDonald, I can brief-
Please help me out.
Yeah, I can brief the board. The policy committee met and looked at record management and retention language that does track what the state of Michigan recommends for school boards, and those documents are available to the full board if the chair of the policy committee would like to move them on. And then, the subcommittee also, or the policy committee also looked at a proposed, by my administration, a proposed change of our residency requirements and our tuition and fees and refunds policy related to students who are enrolled in Henry Ford College that are currently identified by the United States government under something called temporary protected status. And I gave a lengthy brief to the policy committee outlining that these individuals are individuals who are currently identified by the United States government as somewhere in the middle of either not being allowed to be here and needing to be deported, or being allowed here in the country and on a way to, on a path to citizenship. And you may recall, over the last two and a half years, the United States government, through the executive and the congressional branches, have been debating how to handle certain individuals who are here in our country. And this proposed change would take individuals who are in TPS, or temporary protected status, and allow them to be seen as out-of-district students for tuition purposes. Now, there are two bylaws or policies that are affected by this. One is the residency requirement, and the other one is tuition, and they're essentially the same type of question, and that is, if you enroll in Henry Ford College, what is your tuition rate? And of course, we have three, at least three different rates. One is in district, one is out of district, and one is international. And up until now, and still today, students who are in temporary protected status pay international rates. And this proposal takes the, those students that are under TPS status and would give them out-of-district tuition rates, which is lower than the international rate.
A significant save, yeah.
And one thing that the committee, I think, was wise to ask about was, how many students would this affect in our current population? And that answer is eight. And of course, as is the practice with this committee, this was first proposed and discussed with them, and of course, a whole month will continue until, unless the policy committee comes back to the full board with a recommendation. I can answer any questions that you have about that, or I can move to the last thing that the policy committee discussed.
Just to clarify then, the record management and retention, is that just verbiage that's being changed that aligns with the state-
That's storing records?
Policy, yeah.
And how appropriate, how long to store them?
Right, so we're just aligning to the state?
Yes, and, Madam Chair, what I recommend the chair of the policy committee do is, if the policy committee, and I do, I think I'm representing it fairly, that they were positively disposed to these three issues, then I'd recommend that the chair of that committee- Committee-
They'd be-
Send them around to the board, and you would see-
Right, the changes.
Madam Chair, that the, that the changes are merely proscriptive about how and when this college will retain and/or destroy documents.
Yeah, and that, and that's what we normally do with any policy changes, is, is get to see the, almost a side-by-side of the old policy and the, and the changes. Okay.
And I'm, I'm sorry.
Well, Trustee Moses, please.
I, I just wanted to say for TPS, it's a great step that we're doing this, because these students are obviously in very tough positions, and I'm glad that we're giving, helping them out attain education in our college. I know many students, that number was way bigger than, than eight, and some students had to actually seek asylum in Canada and leave our college, and it's because of what's going on right now in the country, unfortunately. But, I'm, I'm really glad that we're helping these students and that we can also advertise this. So, if any TPS students who are not enrolled in any college, that they would know that they can enroll with a very lower charge or lower rate, still out-of-district, but they're still way lower than what an international student would pay.
May I address that?
Yes.
Trustee Moses, I appreciate your comments on that. You have a unique and, I think, probably highly valuable perspective on that, and I, I'm glad you have, we have your perspective on the board about that. If the Chair of the Subcommittee and the Chair of the Full Board allow, well, I'll circulate that language to you all, and I, I did mention at the Subcommittee that immigration policy in this country is, is an issue that is up for public debate, and I don't shy from that. I, I gave what I thought was a fair assessment of the two sides of the argument to the Policy Subcommittee, and I do, if, if the Chair of the Subcommittee does believe we should bring it to the full board, I do think this is something that we should have at the full board for full discussion, because obviously, this board will have to vote on it to change it, and I don't want, Trustee Moses, I don't want you to misunderstand, I, I don't have the authority, and I don't think the Chair of the Subcommittee is proposing this for a vote tonight.
Is this coming to us next meeting?
Yes.
The next month.
Of course, the board has authority to-
Sure.
-to do what it'd like, but I, I would recommend it follow its, its policy and practice of, being aware that we talked about it at the Subcommittee, and that if the Subcommittee wishes to distribute the information to the board soon, as in today or tomorrow, and then, if it followed its, its past practices, it would bring this to the board, full board for debate and discussion and vote if, if, if supported at the next meeting, or whenever there is an agenda item that, that merits enough discussion that it'd be on the agenda.
Trustee Williams, first.
Oh, Trustee Lane?
On the TPS, I would like to ask that the Committee consider, at least, a case-by-case basis option. I personally have done many applications for TPS with people, and I can tell you, I did one with one Somali man who had lived in the United States-